Have the opportunity to celebrate some students tonight as well as a community organization. And we're going to start first by honoring two students who achieved a perfect score on the PSAT. Yeah, Nicholas Bertholot is a junior at Lewis Palmer High School and Rhett Jones is a junior at Palmer Ridge High School. And we have Principal Bridget O'Connor here tonight to share remarks about Nicholas. And although Rhett can't be here tonight, we do have Dr. Adam Frank here from Palmer Ridge High School. So at this point, I'd like to invite up Mrs. O'Connor, Dr. Frank, and Nicholas for some remarks. And then we will present Nicholas with a plaque and grab a few photographs.
Hello, everyone, and hello, school board. And appreciate this opportunity, Ms. Matisic, to recognize we do like to compete our two schools. But this is a pretty cool opportunity that we so happen to have a perfect score from a student at each school, which is is pretty incredible. Rhett could not be here tonight. I'm sure his family will watch the recording of this and we'll do a little presentation at Palmer Ridge for Rhett. But he does know that that I'm presenting. He is actually on a college visit right now, so that's why he can't be here. But Rhett is a really neat kid, Rhett Jones, obviously brilliant, as is Louis Palmer's student. Perfect score on a PSAT creates amazing opportunities. You've got another big test coming up with the the actual SAT, but already a lot of doors open for both these students. Rhett is a fun kid. He's got a great sense of humor. If you just were to interact with him, you probably wouldn't even know how smart he is, which that's a compliment. Rhett's a great kid, great human being, enjoys his peers and his social life at Palmer Ridge, but clearly is pretty spectacular when it comes to his intelligence and capabilities on the PSAT. So we're very proud of him at Palmer Ridge and look forward to celebrating when he gets back from his college visit. Thank you.
All right, Nicholas, step on up here while I have equally great things to say. It sounds like these two should get together because they have a lot in common. Nicholas, I believe, is is just the true picture of what we want for every D38 graduate and current student. Obviously, his academic achievements speak for themselves tonight. What you don't know about Nicholas is he is very well-rounded. He's a very talented musician in our bands. He is also in several different clubs, in particular HOSA, which is Health Occupations, where they compete against other schools. He just very much wants to be in the know and apply his knowledge to help others. I think what I really appreciate about Nicholas is his intellectual humility. He is always wanting to learn more. He is so curious. I see some of his peers in the audience shaking their head, always asking questions and just wanting to grow. He never feels like he made it. A funny story, I hope he's okay with me sharing, is he came up to me when I I told him about the perfect score and he said, "Miss O'Connor, I have a confession to make." And I was like, "Okay, Nicholas, can't wait for this one." I guessed on one of them. So that's Nicholas for you in a nutshell. He is hands down one of the most welcoming and kind people. You see him in the hall, if it's just you and him, doesn't matter, there is no stranger. He's always saying hello and just a really wonderful human being, apart from his perfect score. So because of all of these traits, I know he has a very exciting future and I hope he comes back and shares what he ends up doing. So congratulations, Nicholas.
Ms. Matisic, could we also invite his parents up for a few photos? Mom and Dad, family. We can get everybody in here.
Let's put parents on each side.
Would you be willing to share what your future plans are, Nicholas? Would you be willing to share what your future plans are?
Well, I've been thinking personally about doing either medicine or international business. I've always found languages to be a really interesting thing and all the different cultures of the world exist and might as well learn about them while they're there. Thank you.
Very well spoken. And congratulations, Mom and Dad, as well.
Yes, congratulations.
We have another recognition.
We do. So next up, we are going to recognize a community nonprofit that has been an amazing partner for D38 for many, many years. TriLakes Cares has supported our students and our families through the work of their mission statement and provided a compassionate safety net for families when needed. In fact, last Thanksgiving, when we gathered food here at Big Red at the administration office for a family in need, we fell a little short on our donations and we wanted more for this family in need. We reached out to TriLakes Cares and they were very quick to respond and say, "Absolutely, we will help you with whatever you need." So they were a big reason that we could make the family a little brighter for another family in D38. So we are very honored to have with us tonight Haley Chapin, the executive director, and also Rich Schur, board president. So I would like to invite them up to the podium to give a few remarks as we are so pleased to be able to honor and thank you tonight.
As you know, it's our honor to be able to partner and make this community a better place for all who need it, whether they come from the school district or they've aged out of the school system. We're here to help the community however they need assistance. So being our the all-encompassing health and human service nonprofit located here and serving here, we we aim to make life a little bit easier during the stressful times. So whether that's putting food on the table, clothes on the back, a roof over your head, getting the mental health support you need or budget counseling for the families or equipping the kiddos with snacks during the day for a snack pack or school supplies to get ready to learn as they go to school, we're able to be here to help and honored to be able to serve. So thank you for all the many ways in which the school district participates and supports our organization, everything from food drives. We even sometimes get students that come over to do projects with us. In fact, we have a student from Palmer Ridge coming over to make an appearance at our all-staff meeting tomorrow to present on ways that our team should be able to use AI in our workplace. So very integrated throughout the work that we do. Thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Matisic, you are still on. I am still on, yes, because we have one more recognition for tonight. And we would actually like to wrap up our Elevate 38 recognition by honoring you, our board members. It is National School Board Recognition Month, which makes it the perfect time to say thank you. We know that you all volunteer a lot of time and energy to make D38 a great place for our students, staff, and families. And we have two principals here tonight, one from representing the elementary level, Devon Johnson from Lewis Palmer Elementary School. And then also, back to the podium, we'll have Bridget O'Connor, principal from Lewis Palmer High School. And they are going to share some remarks and some words of gratitude for each of you.
Thank you. All right, good evening, Devon Johnson, principal at Lewis Palmer Elementary School. And I was trying to get my team to come up here, but they can wave from the back. Okay. I have the pleasure to speak on behalf of the elementary principal team. We want to thank you for your support of our students, our staff, our community, and our principal team. Running a school district is no easy feat, as we all know. And we all appreciate your consistency, your devotion to supporting and making sure that you can help make us the best that we can be as well as school leaders. At Lewis Palmer Elementary School, many of you have had a chance to come and visit and we're focusing on staying on track, thus the train. You can tell I didn't make the train, but the children wanted to recognize you as well. And we're working on doing that and staying an excellent school and an excellent part of our school district. We know it takes all of us to stay on track. And we just want to thank you for being part of our crew, all five of us from the elementary team, all aboard.
Thank you. That was really good.
Well, the secondary team is not as organized or clever. I was voluntold by Dr. Frank that I got to give tonight's presentation. I will use our gift to frame my comments. We at LP are focusing on family, it's who we are. And the visual is a tree. And so the gift that you have, spoiler alert, is The Giving Tree by Shel Silverstein. It's one of my favorite books. And I think it means something different when you are a child and certainly when you are a board member. So it is the gift because if you remember the story, it's about a tree who gives unselfishly to the boy who he loves. And throughout the story, the boy is not always grateful for the tree and for the love and all of the things that the tree does for the boy, which obviously is a symbol for all of the work that each of you do. And I want to thank you for first and foremost being a great role model for our students about what it means to volunteer at a very, very high level and a huge commitment. And also to give in ways where you're not going to get a lot of recognition or accolades and sometimes have to make very tough decisions. So I thank you very much for what you do for our students and for our staff and that you are fueled by the work that you do just because it's the right thing to do. Again, I I want to thank you, as Devon said, I think it's forgotten many times that you are volunteers. So thank you for all of the hours that you put in. And thank you for what you do, not only for our students and for our staff, but for our leadership team as well. Enjoy tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
We would like to get a photo of all of you as well. If you could bring up your small acrylic award there that's at your place setting, make sure it's out of the bag, bring that up for the photo. And then we'll have all the principals that are here, if you'd like to join in the photo as well.
as well.
All right, two rows. Two rows, let's put the board members with their award in the front, Chris and Todd kind of on the end. Ron?
We're only little people. They volunteer with you.
Todd, can you kind of in a little bit, but to your report? Get a little tighter on the right-hand side, too. Tighter, tighter, tighter.
Thank you all for your kindness and your generous words and, and showering us with love. It means a lot, and we do it for you and for our kids. I also want to acknowledge, there is another board member in this room that I want to acknowledge because it is National Board Appreciation Month, and that is Mr. Ryan Graham from Monument Academy. He's President of their board, so I also want to thank him for his service and volunteerism as a board member. Thank you, sir. At this time, in accordance with policy BEDH, the board will hear comments from members of the public who have signed up to speak. It is our goal as a board to continuously listen and improve, and we invite members of our community to speak publicly for a total of 30 minutes. Speakers will be allotted up to three minutes each, and time may divide, be divided equally if there's more than 10 individuals who wish to speak. Groups with the united concern may be asked to appoint a spokesperson. The Board of Education does not expressly or individually respond to public comments, and to that point, comments expressed do not represent the position or opinion of the Board of Education or District 38. Finally, we ask that you keep comments shared appropriate for our PK-12 audience and respectful at all times. Should you have an issue with a staff member that you would like to address, please consider sharing those criticisms and concerns with our superintendent, who is responsible for supervising all staff and involving the board as necessary. And I also would be remiss if I didn't say and welcome, I know we'll hear from you guys in a moment, but Erin Weeks and Anna Hacker are our student representatives tonight that are joining us, and I think that Mr. Schwartz will introduce you in a bit, but I just wanted to make sure you guys are a part of this process as well. Okay. Our first speaker we have is Jason Dueno. That's fine, right there. Yeah.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Board of Directors, for the opportunity to be able to share some information about Silver Key. So I'm the President and CEO of Silver Key Senior Services, and I've been with the organization since 1987. But one of the things that might be helpful to know about the history of Silver Key and D-38 is this building right here, this space and place, used to be the hub that seniors were linked to food, that have challenges with being able to have access to food back in the 70s and the 80s, before the gymnasium was converted. So the history of Silver Key with D-38 extends for many, many decades, even far longer than I've been at the organization. I've been a long time. The other piece I want to share with you is in our most recent history, however, is there's been two acquisitions that have been part of Silver Key's most recent work, and that is with Mountain Community Senior Services. And so we acquired that organization to make sure seniors have access to transportation and food in the community that otherwise may struggle. Also, one of the things that has happened recently is the acquisition of Tri-Lake Silver Alliance. Tri-Lake Silver Alliance, which you probably know more recently, has been one of the entities that the school district and at Grace Best Elementary has been hosting for several, 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 several months, if going into actually a couple of years now. And through that partnership, what that means is, is that we have access to be able to provide a space and place for older adults to have a caring place, to support people that otherwise may not be connected to the community or not have access to the importance of transportation, nutrition, et cetera. Also, the connection with the students has been one of the things that we've been working forward, is to be able to build intergenerational connection. Older adults bring wisdom, resilience, adaptivity, being adaptable to younger individuals in our community, so it's a way to bridge. One of the things that's recently happened is I know that there's two things on the agenda, so it's full circle in some ways for Silver to take some public comment, or give public comment at this point, is in this gymnasium, food was provided out of here, and now we're at a point where the board is making two very important decisions. The first one is the future of Grace Best. Because we are in Grace Best, we are operating out of that, that part of your organization, we're tenants there, we've tried to improve the space and place, not only for the people we serve, but the community and the seniors and the students that are using the shared space. So I think we've made a very concerted effort to build what remains as an opportunity for the older adults in this community through Grace Best. The decision you make will impact the way Silver Key can or cannot move forward in the care that we provide older adults. The second decision that I know you're facing today is what happens with the different parcels of land that you have available. I know that one of the things that I'm providing feedback to is action number one, the three-acre sale of TLC's potential opportunity to purchase some land. That three-acre property is one of the things that we've been working with leadership of TLC to be able to talk with, see if we can solution and problem solve both for the benefit of TLC, Silver Key, the community overall, and D-38. I want to assure you that if we can come up with some solution that makes sense for both organizations and the organization that would be selling the land, we would want to make that happen. Also, I want to share with you that one of the things that can happen is that sometimes things get out of sync with each other. We know that the decision that the board makes about Grace Best today may cause and put Silver Key in a precarious position to be able to advance faster than maybe the sale and maybe a new build would take for us to be able to find a space to be at a home temporarily. So I just wanted to share with you that as you make those decisions, those very difficult decisions, as was said earlier, know that Silver Key is committed to this community, know that we're committed to be able to make sure that the students that have access to be interfacing with older adults will benefit from that education experience, and know that we are also committed that this community will have a safe space for all older adults to age, and that way we support not only the grandparents that have grandchildren in their homes, but we also support the people that are isolating and don't have the connections that they need. And through that, I will share with you that however it happens with Grace Best and with TLC, Silver Key at this point, over that 70, over that 54 years of being in the community, we have been able to develop the reserves to be able to invest in this community. We've demonstrated in what we did in Grace Best, if there's an opportunity for other land or other options, if it doesn't work out for whatever reasons with TLC, I just want to put out there that Silver Key is in a strong position to be able to bring resource differently through purchase of, of other land, if that made sense. We are trying to work out the operational pieces between the two organizations. The major challenge that we have at this point is the timeframe, because if a decision is made today for Grace Best, that accelerates what Silver Key's needs are, and I know that TLC has some timeframes that they're looking at in, in a future build, and those may not be in jive right now, but I assure you that we want to be partnered together. I support the acquisition of TLC of this land if it works out, and for some reason, again, if it doesn't, I want to make sure that you know that Silver Key is positioned to be able to help to solve issues, not only for Silver Key, TLC, but also the community as well. Thank you. I've used my full three minutes, I think, but if there's any questions, I certainly can entertain those.
Thank you so much. And if there's any questions, we can reach out to you as well.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you so much, Jason. Okay. Thank you. Our next speaker is Melinda Reichel.
Hi there. Thank you so much for having me. Have some time tonight to speak. So I want to just briefly address the impending superintendent resignation. I don't know any of you except perhaps President Upchurch. I met her once this summer at a Chamber event, and I told her something that I'm going to tell each of you, there's a special place in heaven for each of you for serving on a school board. So I understand how difficult this must be. I don't really know Dr. Dattery. I've only met her twice, once through Alliance Club event that she came to, and then I'm also a member of the Tri-Lakes Women's Club, and she came there and spoke. The two times that I met her, she was very intelligent, engaging, articulate. She was really reaching out to the community with a positive spin on D-38. So I just want to tell you a little bit about my history. 26 years I worked in the healthcare system, 13 years at Pendlewood Hospital, 13 years at Memorial, both in leadership positions. And we had change through all 26 years of there. And there's a model of change that I want to talk to you about. It is called forming, storming, norming, performing. Every change that we saw at both healthcare systems, and they're both wonderful healthcare systems, went through this process of forming, storming, norming, and performing. And we always came out on, for the better at the end. So I think that could be what's happening here. Forming, there's certainly storming going on. You will eventually get to norming. You might go back to some more storming. You might go back to some more forming, and then get to norming, but you will eventually get to performing. So this is what I recommend happen tonight. I'm going to recommend to you and encourage to you that you remove from your consent agenda this resignation. Take a step back, have some conversation with yourselves. You're all very smart people. Have some conversation with people who might be having some issues. Have some conversation with your superintendent and arrive at some positive problem solving, because I think that she is going to be a win for our, our school district if we give her the time to do her forming and we get through our storming, because we're going to norm and perform. If this moves forward, I think two things are going to happen. There will be a segment of your staff that now has incredible power. But the other piece that I think is going to hit us down the road, any future superintendents are going to say, hmm, what happened here? Do I really want to work for the school district where something like this could happen? So, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate all your hard work. You all are fabulous. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Those are our two speakers tonight. We have board member comments. And I know, Mr. Brown, you, I always hate going first, but I'm going to lean on you.
Okay. I don't have too much to say, just this has been a very humbling experience. I've just been just over one full year on the board, and I really appreciated my time with the fellow board members and the great people I get to work with on this, and that we're entrusted to be in this position. It's not always as easy as we'd like it to be, but I guess that's what we signed up for, and we're just trying to do what we can to represent our community the best that we can.
Thank you. Mr. Schwartz?
Thanks to all the, all the various schools and to the district for the recognition. It's unnecessary. Well, we appreciate it. Our fulfillment is really easy. It's seeing the next generation of our country get perfect scores on PSATs and homeschool enrichment kids interact together and, and have another half of their life, and then transition kids reach milestones of equal value, and 150 people on the ice at Palmer Lake tonight and all the stuff that makes our, our environment and our country great, and that's why we do this. So I, all the Sunday mornings and all the late evenings that we all get together and talk are worth every ounce of time and energy.
Dr. Schenk?
Like Todd, I'm finishing up a year, and it's been a lot to learn, but really wonderful. And meeting, meeting teachers, meeting staff members, administrators, this has just been a whirlwind, wonderful year. It's hard, and it's a good hard. A lot of hard things aren't always that much fun, but this, this has been because of, because of my fellow board members and because of the people in the schools, the schools and in D-38 as a whole that I get to interact with. I, I get that we have hard, some hard decisions, and I feel really comfortable that this group of people that I work with are, are just going to do what's necessary mostly for the students, that that's, that our eye is on the ball, and we know, we know that that's who we are, we are working for. So I feel really glad about that. Thank you very much for the recognition. It's, as Ron said, it's not needed. We do it because we want to. But it's fun to get gifts.
Mr. Norris?
Yes, I have a lot, believe it or not. I don't usually take up too many people's time, but in this particular case, I've got a lot of stuff to cover. So first and foremost, again, to the district, thank you so much for recognizing us and the work we do, and y'all are awesome. So thank you so much. I get to spend some time on a few different organizations, committees, GELT being one of them, so I want to bring some good news stories from that group. Lewis Palmer Middle School is working on a pilot program to identify students as gifted in the areas of creativity and leadership. Also, CDE is a new system for submitting required GT plans and documents, and the Lewis Palmer School District Early Access Plan was submitted into the system last week. It was approved by the CDE. Not only was it approved, it's going to be used to help maintain and train other districts around the Pike's Peak area in navigating how to convert the old plans into the new system and format. So good job to the GELT team. The other group that I'd like to represent, it's probably why Mr. Graham is here, is some good MA news stories. They're doing some good things over there, and I think he's here to make sure I don't talk bad about them. So I, I am a parent of a child that attends MA, and they have a lot of stuff going on at that school that I think probably doesn't get a lot of recognition. So I asked Colin Bencatto to share with me some good news stories so I can, I can address them here. MA is excited to implement the vision for their high school at Monument Academy, which is to develop students of character that shapes them into great leaders. They're working diligently on creating their leadership curriculum for the upcoming freshman and the following year to follow them as sophomores. The leadership program will be a requirement for all MA high schoolers who begin in the 2025, 2026 school year to compete upon, to complete upon graduation. They're excited to partner with STRATA Leadership and various National Character and Leadership Institute members at the Air Force Academy. Their students are going to intern with local businesses in their junior year, and they're partnering with the Pike's Peak Business and Education Alliance. This opportunity will contribute to the developing well-rounded, flourishing individuals and prepare them to be future business leaders. Also, the middle school cheer team, which my daughter is a part of, were champions at the middle school state champion cheerleading competition. Middle school boys' basketball team won their league with an undefeated record, and at the end of December, the PTO held a craft fair at both campuses, and the students got the chance to display their talents and creativity while learning about business entrepreneurship. High school student council will host the Prince and Princess Ball for our elementary students and their families. It's a wonderful evening during which our families can create memories and make lasting connections and strengthen the bridge we value in our K-12 school. We anticipate an excellent turnout for our kindergarten roundup on Friday, January 31, and are grateful for the work at our preschool that has fed into our kindergarten program, and we look forward to meeting new families outside of Monument Academy as well. Lot of good work there. That's all I have.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm going to take a little bit of privilege. I've got a little bit more to share tonight as well. First of all, I do want to say thank you, heartfelt thank you, to our speakers tonight. And while we don't respond necessarily during open forum, please know that your comments have been heard, and we appreciate you taking the time to demonstrate your interest in our schools, in our school district, in our community, in our students, in our staff, and to... and to share your opinions. And I'm hopeful that tonight, a lot of your questions or thoughts might, could be addressed during our discussion on our agenda items. I am very, always very humbled at all these gifts. It's not, it's a service heart, is why we do what we do. And I'm always reminded, I've brought this a few times, but I'm always reminded of the first board appreciation that I experienced, and I was not expecting it, and I was given a plaque. And I want to share this, and it says, "A true leader has the confidence to stand alone, the courage to make tough decisions, and the compassion to listen to the needs of others. He does not set out to be a leader, but becomes one by the quality of his actions and the integrity of his intent." And that's by Douglas MacArthur. And I wanted to share that not because about us as board members, but about the staff and the teachers and the community members that we have here in D38 for stepping forward and being leaders and being voices. So, thank you for all of you. I also wanted to share this, along this vein, I just read an interview by Martin Luther King III, which is the eldest son of Martin Luther King Jr. and Coretta Scott King. And as we all know, yesterday was inauguration day, and it was also MLK Day. And in his interview, he was asked, "What does living in his father's dream mean to him?" And his answer was, "It's through service." Now, we're still going to be needing to turn to each other and not be turning on each other, and so we do that through many ways in acts of service. And the hope is that people double down and rededicate themselves towards the work. And the work isn't done. King and his wife, who, her name is Andrea Waters King, and their daughter, Yolanda Renee King, have decided to double down on their family's efforts to unite the country and bring it to a place where every American experiences peace, justice, equality, and love, which is the dream his father had. And he said, "We have to do this," and it comes down to one word, "community." And we have to keep it going. The truth is, we don't have the luxury of giving up or giving out. And so the King family has set out and asked each of us to get to work. And the Kings are setting a five-year goal of creating 100 million hours of community service by 2029, which is also the year that Martin Luther King Jr. will have turned 100 years old. So, I challenge you. Volunteer in our schools? Yes. Clean up your neighborhood? Yes. Work at a food pantry? Yes. And so some of the things we as board members are doing is working with our community and our committees. And I want, I attended our CAC meeting this week, and our CAC, we had, the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation came and spoke to us, but I also want to remind our community that Aliorum Day nominations will open up on Valentine's Day. And if nobody knows what that is, Aliorum Day means to do something, it's doing something extraordinary for a student who's an exceptional or a different disability student, different ability student. And we do nominations from students. We nominate a student that's done something extraordinary, a staff member that's done something extraordinary, and a community member that's done something extraordinary. So keep your eyes open on our website, and please nominate somebody that's done something extraordinary for a student here in D38. We also, as board members, will be continuing to be in our schools. We'll be at Lewis Palmer Middle School tomorrow, and I personally, and I know many of the other board members, have thoroughly enjoyed being in the classrooms with our students, so we will continue to do that. Casby's Days at the Capitol is coming up. It's February 6th, and I would encourage each and every board member to attend that. And that's, we'll be there from 7:30 to 1:30, and we'll have a chance to meet with our legislators and experience the legislative process. And then our winter legislative conference is February 27th and the 28th, so I would encourage my fellow board members to attend that as well. And I also wanted to share some highlights around D38. There's always a lot to celebrate. So, for example, tonight, as we sit here, the Palmer Lake Outdoor Classic, our Lewis Palmer Hockey Team will host and face off against our crosstown rival, which is Pine Creek, and two other Denver-area teams. And it's a good old-fashioned pond hockey. It's a fundraiser for their program, and we hope everyone stays warm out there, drinks lots of hot cocoa. And then we also have, the Board of Education will be at our Lewis Palmer, Palmer Ridge High School Motown Showdown this Friday, and we'll be there sharing and celebrating with the Town of Monument. Town of Monument's mayor will be there as well. We'll have a brief presentation so that we can show how grateful we are for the unwavering partnership we have with Town of Monument. And then both of our high schools are eager to welcome their future freshmen. Palmer Ridge High School and Lewis Palmer High School both hosted eighth-grade choice night last week for prospective students, I'm sorry. So, we'll see who's going to be a bear and who's going to be a ranger. And then our Lewis Palmer Middle School is also welcoming all sixth graders across the district who are invited to come see what life is like to be a patriot, and that is tomorrow night, and that is from 5 o'clock to 6:30. So, there's lots of goings-ons preparing for the next school year. And then I also want to lean in on two of our homeschool enrichment academy students who were recognized by the Veterans of Foreign Wars last month for their accomplishment in the Voice of Democracy writing contest. Aiden Hatley received a certificate, and Annabelle Carter was also awarded a cash prize. So we want to say congratulations to those students as well and for all their hard work in demonstrating their excellence in writing skills and leaning into their civics. And that is all I have, and so if there's no further, then we will move on to our next agenda item. And that will be, our other two members that are sitting here at the board, Mr. Schwartz, would you like to introduce?
I'd be honored.
Aaron and Anna.
Yeah, so to my right is Anna Hacker. She's a senior at Lewis Palmer High School. She's also the secretary of the student council. She's involved in SPEED, NHS, the Key Club, and looking forward to attending college next year in the study of political science. So, welcome. And to the right of Mr. Brown is Aaron Weeks. It's actually his second time, so we must have not been too bad the first time. Thanks for coming back. He's also a senior at Lewis Palmer High School, and he's actually the social media and marketing person for StuCo, as well as social media and outreach for the robotics program. And he's involved in Key Club and NHS as well, and interested in attending college next year in the social sciences area. So, welcome to you both. And they're going to take us through a short presentation on some of the work that they've been doing that impacts the community.
Yeah, we think it's important just to show everybody that, you know, besides dances, we do a lot of work within the community outside of the school. So, we're just going to be sharing with you a presentation of our activities the past few months.
So, the first thing we wanted to do is highlight successes that we've had recently, and the main one is connected to Harvest of Love. We raised over $4,000 for TriLakes Cares, which is exceptional. That is the best that our school has ever done. And, you know, we've talked about rivalry. That also means we beat PR, which is great news. And we also pioneered some new events. Primarily, we had a Top Golf Give Back Night, which we've never done, and that raised about $1,000, which is great. And then we also had a door decorating competition, which was, which was really fun. We had some great doors. There was one that was The Rock, and that was my favorite one. But we, it was a great way to get our teachers involved in some holiday activities and to build school spirit.
All right. So, in the upcoming weeks, we are going to be having our Wish Week. This is a week dedicated to a single kid for Make-A-Wish, where we, it's the week of our winter formal dance, Snowball. So, a lot of what we do is, we theme that whole week's celebrations around the kid that we're choosing. This year, our kid is Harper, who's the daughter of our hockey coach. So, she's, you know, really close already, a ranger, which is great to see. It'll get the students even more involved. It'll be from February 3rd to February 8th, and our aim this year is to grant two wishes by raising $13,000. Each wish for Make-A-Wish costs about $6,500. So, we're trying to grant two with the money we raise from selling snowball tickets. We run a lot of events like glow-in-the-dark dodgeball, miracle minutes at hockey and basketball games, silent auctions. And we will have incentives. So, last year, I know our student council advisor dyed her hair purple. We had our English teacher buzz off all her hair. So there's a lot of incentives for students to get really involved with donating. It'll be a big success. It was last year. We're really excited for it.
And one of the things that we're proudest of over at LP Student Council is the fact that we are actually recognized on the state level as one of the best councils in the state. So, last year, LPHS Student Council was one of 23 councils in the state to be recognized as Chassa Gold, which is a distinction provided to councils that meet high standards in various areas, including community service, school spirit, and achievement. So, if you, when we move to the next slide, we've got some of the criteria that we have to meet in order to be recognized as a council. It's a little wordy, but some of the things we have to do to be recognized, to be considered a gold council, are things like having a forum for connecting with our students, having two or more in-person or virtual leadership training sessions that we all attend. We have to have evidence of an activity that contributes to the development of a positive school climate, things that help us as a council focus on our healthy habits, and ways that we engage with new students. So, there are like 70 criteria. I just included some of the ones that I thought were the most indicative of the things that we aim for as a council, but we meet all of those standards, and that's why we're recognized as an exceptional council within the state, which is something we are very, very proud of. Aaron?
Sorry, guys.
So, this semester, our application for gold is due in February, so we will reapply for gold, and we will continue to affirm our commitment to creating a spirited student body and the best possible environment for all members of D38, which includes students, administration, board members, and our community. And that's where we really excel. That's it.
Okay.
Thanks. We appreciate your time listening to our council endeavors.
Well, thank you both, keeping busy and really representing the community well. In the spirit of doing more than just dances, they will likely be exiting shortly to make sure they catch at least half of the hockey event. Yeah?
Got to be involved with that community.
Well, thank you both very much. And as we're going along and deliberating and discussing our agenda items, if there's anything that you want to chime in on or you have a question, but also, if you want to just go and have fun at a hockey game, go LP, so.
Ranger Nation.
So, our first action item is D1, consider approve the sale of land parcel located with the administrative complex boundaries. And we'd like to invite Chief Business Officer Brett Ridgway and Director of Planning and Facilities and Grounds, Ms. Melissa Andrews.
Just skip, see.
Oh, what did I miss? Oh, gosh.
Presentations.
Yes, presentations. See? I'm all anxious to go to the hockey game as well. So, priority number one update is relationships and communication. And Ms. Matisik, you get to join us up here a lot tonight.
I get to join you again. That's right.
And I apologize for skipping over you. I just was excited to move on and thinking of hockey.
And I'm all with you. I'm like-minded. I was a hockey mom for 10 years. So, go LP. I hope they have a great time tonight. So, I am very pleased to be here tonight, President of Church and Board of Directors, to share an overview of one of our strategic priorities, and that is priority number six for relationships and communication. Before I go into my overview, however, though, I would like to acknowledge my colleagues who are part of the action team for the specific priority. So, thank you to Julia Beta, our transportation manager, Greg Saunders, who's principal at Kilmer Elementary, Gina Bodenhausen, Dean of Students at Bear Creek Elementary, Nick Baker, Athletic Director at Lewis Palmer High School, Troy Sides, Assistant Principal at Lewis Palmer High School, Shannon Mauring, Assistant Principal at Lewis Palmer Middle School, and Amy Sinkowsky, Assistant Principal at Palmer Ridge High School. I think that our action team was and is amazing because we bring so many different perspectives to the table, and just the fact that we do serve in different roles ensures that we're looking at this from some different points of view. So again, you'll see from our graphic here that we frequently show that strategic priority number six fully aligns with our mission and our vision of elevating the futures of every student every day, and tonight we are going to focus on that priority number six, the relationships and communication. So, within our work, we have three different outcome measures. And the first measure that we're going to look at is connected to our staff survey, and specifically looks at one of the questions, a net promoter score question on D38 is a good place to work. So, we are shooting for, and this is a three-year plan, so by 2027, reaching a score of 38, which is definitely in the good category. Going year over year, this year, we landed at an 8.78, so increasing it by 10 points within 2025, and then 10 points again in 2026. And I think that research is just a great tool when it comes to communications work and public relations work, because it essentially measures behaviors. So we can use this particular metric to look at the behaviors and opinions of how that is changing for our staff members. So the action steps that align with that particular outcome measure would be, first of all, creating effective systems for district-wide communications. And many of these we have already launched. You are most likely familiar with, I hope, our brand-new BOE recap that we send after each board meeting, as well as our work sessions, so that our staff members, as well as families and community, can get a brief update and really recap of those particular meetings. We also rolled out recently this semester our LP Leadership Link, which goes to our building leaders every Monday with important information for them that is consolidated into one communication. We also rolled out a Building Connections e-newsletter, so that we can stay in contact with employees, share important information with them, and take time to highlight colleagues in there too. So the next step really for this is then beginning to track engagement, so we can keep track of what types of stories and content are getting the most engagement. What are they actually, what are our staff members consuming, so that we can make these tools even better? And I can tell you that I've already received from staff members and community members positive feedback, particularly on the BOE recap. Another action step that we are looking at is being able to launch a one-stop digital spot for staff members when they need important information. So think of it like a digital filing cabinet. It may end up being something like an Intranet. It may end up being something like an enhanced Google site with folders, but a place where our staff members would know the information that they're seeking is the most current. The vendor that we work with on our website is going to be rolling out an Intranet option this year, so that may be something that we can consider. But we are definitely working in collaboration with human resources, as well as technology services, to make sure that we pick the right option for this. Another action step that we are looking at is increasing staff recognition, and this really does work hand in hand with another of our strategic priorities, valuing all people, because it just makes sense that that intertwines with relationships. So with this particular one, you can see that some of the items that we've already started doing are having more staff spotlights, and that might be in some of the communications tools that I also already mentioned, making sure that we have staff kudos in different places like our e-newsletter, and then also doing some work to elevate our recognition awards within our board meetings. And not only do we recognize that in a little bit of a different way, but we make sure that we include those recognition photos and shout-outs in our communication tools, such as the BOE recap. So here, I wanted to include a little bit of information in a graphic on how we can measure how we are doing with that first outcome measure. We can look at last year with our net promoter score, which essentially looks at the number of promoters minus those who would be a detractor based on how they're scoring different questions. Last year, that number was negative. We have seen a really nice increase, so we are well into the positive zone on that, and look to increase that. zone on that, and look to increase that by at least 10 points each year for the next three years. Our second outcome measure has to also do with another survey question. This is the question in the parent survey in regards to that net promoter score, which really looks at how many of these people taken the survey would be considered a promoter. The net promoter score for our parent survey is higher even. You can look at our baseline score, where we're beginning, and our goal, because we are higher than that staff number, is to increase that by increments of five points from year to year. And those who have developed the net promoter score system would say that anything over a 30 is actually in the good category. So we are actually starting at a pretty good spot. Our action steps like this, much like with our staff, would have to do with developing effective communication systems. Some of those I mentioned earlier not only pertain to our staff, but also to our community members, such as the BOE recap. And then also, what we'll be rolling out very soon to all of our households in the district, our report to our community. So even more people will be able to see the amazing things that we're doing in D38. You might also remember some other tools that we launched this year to help with parent communication, our Smart Tag system, where with our transportation services, families can actually track and monitor their bus riders, or if transportation needs to communicate directly with riders on a particular bus with an app, it makes it a lot easier to do this. And then we also rolled out Rooms this year, which is a two-way communication tool between teachers and parents. So another added benefit, and it is a tool that is actually two-way symmetrical. So when you look at communications and effective public relations, there's a theory of excellence that says communications in there needs to include pieces that are two-way. And Rooms would be an excellent example of that, in addition to a lot of our social media engagement. Our final action item for this particular outcome measure has to do with telling the story of D38 and elevating our community relations. Number of different ways we're doing that. We are being very intentional with increasing storytelling. Some of that you can see by looking at our website, lewispalmer.org. If you go out there and look for this school year so far, you will see 23 different feature stories on there. These are stories about activities that are happening within our schools, or spotlights for staff members. To compare it to this time last year, or for the whole school year last year, there were about 16 feature stories. So it's a different approach, being able to specifically talk about, here's what's happening in our schools. We can also look at social media and about how that has significantly increased over the last few years. When we look at Facebook, we're beyond 5,000 followers. If we look at Instagram, it's about 3,200. So significant increases there, and we get some really good engagement on social media, especially when it comes to recognizing staff members. That's what people in our community like. They like to see when our staff members and our students, too, like tonight with our student, are doing amazing things. We're also going to work on increasing that earned media. When we give pitches to media, or we send out news releases, being able to get extra attention there, earned media doesn't cost us anything. We are earning that. If we look at just the last quarter for a beginning metric, we could see that there were 27 stories within the last quarter that would fall into that earned media category. And then finally, just wanted to mention some different avenues for being able to promote events across the district. And one new example of that would be our Performing Arts Calendar that is on the homepage of the website. So someone could very easily see all the different arts events that are happening across the district. And then the last one that I wanted to mention for this particular outcome measure, the last action step, is creating a fully accessible digital communications and website platform for all of our families and community members. There are requirements, federal requirements, that we need to put in place to make sure that digital communications are fully accessible by the summer. And that simply means that people who may have visual disabilities, or hearing impairments, or even language barriers, that they have access to information like everybody else. One example that you'll already see in place with that is if you go out to the homepage of the website, you can click on a translation tool, and it will actually translate information on the website into a number of different languages. And the e-newsletter tool that we use for many of our communications, such as the BOE recap is one example, has a similar feature. So if you need to actually see the piece in Spanish, for example, you're able to access it that way. So if we look at outcome data for this one, where we are working hard to increase the customer experience for our parents, although in the last survey, the number dipped a little bit, there's definitely positive tools, positive pieces to it, where a number of different questions in there, we score well over four on a scale of one to five. We are already at such a high number anyway, and that there were many, many more participants this year in that survey, that it's important to still look at the fact that over 30 would be considered a good number. For outcome measure number three, we are specifically looking at the number of community partnerships, and we would like to be able to increase that number by 5%. We are definitely in the infancy of this particular step, because we know that there are partnerships out there. We just need to simply build a database. And that's where we're going to start with our first action steps, is working in collaboration with all of our schools, because we know our schools have partnerships, the district has partnerships, being able to document that in one spot, because we know that can help us in a lot of different ways. That could help us with future support for our report to the community. It could help us with sponsorships for our district-wide art show, and could even help our friends at the foundation as well. And then the next action step that I wanted to mention for this outcome measure has to do with recognizing those businesses, because if we could build a database of our partnerships that we have with businesses, the next thing we want to do is be able to recognize them and thank them for all that they do. We can use D38 channels for that, communication channels. We can lean on local media, newspapers with advertisements to be able to do that, and even create recognition awards, really similar to the one that we had tonight for our friends at Tri Lakes Cares. And then our final action step for this outcome measure would be expanding those relationships with the current partners that we have. So that might look like we're inviting key community contacts to events. It might include partnering with different parent groups or HOAs. And it could also mean, which we're planning to do, using our report to the community to help build a broader community opt-in email list. So people who aren't directly connected to the district, as say a parent, this would be a way for them to get information from us as well.
QR codes.
Exactly, right? The QR code is a great way on a printed piece, when you don't have that many pages, to do things. But that goes to accessibility, too, because we've got to be careful with where we're using the QR codes to make sure people can actually access them. Finally, the outcome data for this one is, like I mentioned, it's still in infancy. So as we start to build it, build our database, we're just midway this year, so we're just planting the seeds and creating our plan with how we're going to do that. Then we'll be able to do some measuring with that as we move along. So our next steps will include more of our action meetings and discussions. We are looking forward to including board members. As I know, board members will be participating in all of the strategic priority conversations and meetings. We have a number of communication systems in place. So like I mentioned, we're going to look at, how do we track those? How do we evaluate what we have in place, and how do we make them even better and enhance those strategies along the way? So with that, I will conclude my presentation and open it up for any questions.
Just a brief one, Amy, if you don't mind. We talked about this, I think, in the previous review. But for those that it's the first time they're seeing it, can you give us a feel for the numerator in terms of how many people were surveyed, what kind of response we got, et cetera? There's a few different constituencies, but in general, I think that might help those to absorb the magnitude of what your team's doing.
Right. So the most recent one, and I have a copy of it with me, would be the parent survey. So in last year, in 2023, there were about 500, a little over 500 people that participated. This year, it was close to 850. So it was significantly higher with the number of responses. And it really is a lot of positive data. I mean, you can look at what they call the top two boxes, like the top two tiers of scores, and the vast majority of our scores, like 75% of our scores, fall in those particular areas. So there are a lot of great things happening within our schools. Some of the highest-rated questions on those would be things like, I feel respected when I go into our buildings. That's good. That's important. There were also notable things about how it really does take everyone within a campus to contribute to making a great learning environment, because there were lots of kudos for, the building is clean and it's well-maintained. So it was nice to see those comments as well. Now, the staff survey goes back a little bit farther, and I know Mrs. Welch talked about this in the last meeting. So some of those numbers might escape me a little bit as far as how many participated in that run, Mr. Schwartz. But I can tell you that from the past years, we have seen steady increases in the number of responses that we have from our staff members. So the more staff members are actually responding and participating in the survey. So we take that positively, too, especially when we look at the staff scores from this year increasing so much, that net promoter score.
Dr. Schenk?
I just wanted to specifically call out the increase in communication. I have heard from numerous people that they feel like they know more about what's going on. And it's a big deal, and I just wanted to thank you for that, because it's really helpful. And sometimes I'll go back to them, even though I was there. It's like I can't remember what happened where. So thank you very much for that. It's fabulous.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sir?
No ma'am.
I also like that it's data-driven, because those data points, I mean, you don't want to just do something just to do it. You want to make sure that it's purposeful, intentional, and is results-driven. So I like that piece of it. Something you had mentioned about the mailers that are going to go out to our community members, we saw that, for anybody who wants to know, we saw that in our work session, and it's a beautiful product. You did an exceptional job on it. And what I also want to do a shout-out to is that our Student Enterprise, and we do in-house printing with a lot of our work. So our pamphlet, I have it here, but it's a really nice piece that came about from our students. So engaging and incorporating our student body into that work, along with our leadership and our staff, and to make sure that we are hitting the, making sure that we're taken care of, does our community know who we are and what is our story here in D38? And I'm looking forward to that third one of our community partnerships, because I think that's a really big driver of who we are in our district as well. So I want to thank you for that as well. And we heard during our guiding coalition, a lot of work around, how are we making sure that we are improving the customer experience with our website? So I thank you for that as well.
You're very welcome. That's an important piece.
It's a huge piece, and I'm really excited about that as well.
So thank you. Anything else we need to know?
That's the high-level overview there. There's a lot of work, and I like data-driven pieces, too, and like to use data to drive even communications work. Not everybody thinks that communications is a science, but it is definitely a little bit of art, a little bit of science.
In the business of people. Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you so very much. That was a well-put-together presentation, and I thank you for the work you've been doing in our district. You've been here how long now?
About nine months.
Excellent work. Thank you.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Okay, so now we're moving along. I am not going to get us off track again. We are in C2, Priority Update 2, Career and Innovation Center. And I would love to invite Jessica McAllister up to share an update, along with Ms. Amber Whitstein.
I'll make my comments brief. I wanted to share that we closed the transaction on January 3rd to acquire our career and innovation facility. And I'm very excited for Ms. Jess McAllister to give you an update on our current work to prepare the facility for students this August.
Okay. Thank you so much. Yeah, what'd you mean? Thank you so much for having me again tonight. Happy 2025. Happy School Board Appreciation Month. So, you know, it's always fun to provide these updates to you as we march along the timeline that we have been operating on since we began this endeavor together. So that's always my first slide, as you know. And basically, since we last met in December, we've been working on really two big pushes. One of those is sponsorships and fundraising, and the other one is marketing to our students and just getting a better idea of where the interest might be. So that's what I'm going to be talking about a little bit today. And then at the end, I hope to show you a product to just generate some ideas of what it's going to look like. So first things first, I did a targeted marketing campaign recently, meaning I went to the prerequisite classes that will feed into these spaces coming in the fall. And so what you hear me saying is I went to every woodworking class. I went to every Carpentry I, Carpentry II class. I went to all the engineering classes, and just had some really intentional conversations with all of those students to talk a little bit about what this program entails, to hand them a piece of literature that you have in front of you now, with the idea that they would take at home and continue the conversations with their families. And then also, at the very end of that, to ask them if this sounds of interest to them. So all in, as I mentioned, I visited 24 classrooms over the span of four days at both of the high schools. 80 students expressed interest. So in each of those classes, again, the only students that really could express interest were those that are going to be a junior or a senior next year. So spoke to way more than 80 students, but did get interest from 80 students. And I distributed about 300 postcards in the time being. So I likely spoke to around 250 people. Yes, Ron?
Well, you just answered the question. So 80 out of 250, so over a third.
Yeah, exactly. Moving on to the next slide, you will see just some of the interest that we got. We had about 29 or 30% interest from students of Palmer Ridge High School, and about 70% interest from Lewis Palmer High School. And that same breakdown kind of happens when we start looking at the difference between 11th and 12th grade. So 70% of 11th graders expressed interest, about 30% of 12th graders. And then we started really getting into the programming. So in addition to collecting that information, we were also asking what kind of programming they might be interested in. So Introduction to Welding, we had about 33 students say that that would be of interest to them, which occupies about two class sections. Welding Technology I, we had 20 students that expressed interest. And so you can see right there that we have the interest of students in this advanced manufacturing pathway. Moving on into interest, you can see on the screen that we have about, I don't know, 37 interested in aerospace, 29 for civil, electrical, engineering and manufacturing up into the mid-30s. And then Engineering Design and Development is around 18, and that's because that's a seniors-only kind of class. What I do foresee happening is a couple of things. These are obviously just interest numbers from students. So when registration rolls out, which will be next month, when we start actually getting numbers in, and students have to make intentional decisions on what courses they actually want to take. I also envision a student perhaps taking aerospace engineering in the fall semester and being interested then, and maybe civil into the spring semester or something of that sort. And so then the last pathway that we really talked about, as far as the phasing that we have, is the skilled trades pathway. And so we had about 23 students who were interested in that for next year. So all of those gave us some great information. We also asked about transportation. I will say about a fourth of the people who responded, so around 20, said they would need transportation. About half of them said they just didn't know. So we have an opportunity to transport between, I don't know, 20 and 60 students next year. We will narrow that down as soon as we get into the process of actually securing registrations for next year. Moving on, this slide I'd like to show you is a rendering from Hollis and Miller. It is just a fly-through, if you will. It does have sound. We weren't It is just a fly through, if you will. It does have sound. We didn't, we weren't able to test it before this, but we'll see, we'll see if it works. So enjoy. It's about two minutes long. Okay. And so that video exists now. And what we are doing also is using that combined with some student testimonials and some B-roll that I recently learned of film happening in our classrooms to create more of a promotional video that we will be launching here soon. So we're working with a videographer to help us with that overall concept. And so I'm going to hit the next screen. It might play the video again, Vicky, so let's be ready. Oh, okay. Oh, oh, it went too fast. So that is, that's kind of where we are with that targeted marketing campaign regarding partnership updates. We have a slide in front of you now. We started this in December. And just to kind of remind everyone, the introduction slide is really just initial conversations that we're happening, we're having with people to introduce a little bit about our project and what we're up against. Then it moves into engagement. And these are people that are, are interested, and they want to continue the conversation and see how they might be able to be a part of this. And then implementation is when we actually have something signed and, and on the dotted line. So what you'll see is, is a bar graph, of course. But then if you can kind of extract the border that is polka dot, that's where we were when we presented this in December. And so what you see is what might look like we have the same number of introductions, which we do, those are different partners. Because what you'll see within the engagement phase, several people moved down from nine to 22 in the engagement phase right now. And the implementation phase remains at one. That one is to signify just the investment that we made to purchase the facility. But what I will say is, this morning, we did get a, an email from a very interested person who, we aren't prepared to announce it just yet, but we'll be working with some paperwork and really further defining how they want to contribute. It will likely be our very first Trailblazer sponsorship, so we're excited about that. Also not expressed on the screen is, we did go ahead and submit an application for the CHIPS Act challenge. So we should know something more about that soon. Again, though, the challenge with that is that the money won't come until February of '27, which is a really far time away. Although in the interim, if we're selected, then we get to be a part of a community of practice to bounce ideas off of and, and get inspiration from. We are also actively right now writing two grants, which, when we meet at the next board meeting, I hope to update you on. Timeline again, moving along with both those funding pursuits and then also the targeted marketing campaign, which will then lead into staffing conversations, transportation, logistics, things of that sort. So with that, what questions do you have?
I actually had some comments. I'm on the robotics team. We're on the flyer.
You are on the flyer.
I think I took that photo. I'm pretty proud of it. But we recently had the opportunity to show that video to our own members. I think we talked about inhabiting that space, the practice field you saw in that video in the engineering section might be ours, which is pretty cool. And you were talking about student interest, and I feel like I'm a pretty good person to talk about that. But it's pretty incredible. For example, mentorship is something we've really struggled with on the team. Getting students to come back from college to mentor our new students is always difficult. But I would say about half of the seniors this year plan on coming back as mentors because of the building and how much of an opportunity it is for just new resources and tools to be used. The best teams in the world, the ones that get kids full ride scholarships to elite engineering schools have facilities pretty similar to that. So this is an incredible opportunity. Our team is really excited to be a part of it. So thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. That's wonderful. Thank you for sharing that.
You recorded that, right?
Yes, it's being recorded.
Team?
Back to the partnership update. Now, now that you've had, looks like, a good degree of, of at least initial conversations, and, and might potentially be on the cusp of actually having something, for lack of a more elegant term, inked, that we can act on or with. Are you starting to get a feel for the length of this cycle from initial contact to actually having something that we can work with?
Yeah. So, so one, one statistic that we recently heard in talking to other entities that seek funding like this as well, their, their, their cycle, they said was 18 months from initial conversations until ink. And so, so we're trying to expedite that just a little bit because of our timeframe. But that is the, that is the information that we've gotten. What you can hear is that we likely will have one that went from initial conversation to inked. And, and then actually, that one would just have been a couple of months. So I think somewhere in between.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's a little bit of a, about, of a model of finding the targeted profile?
Yeah.
And then finding a way to get the contact?
Mm-hmm. Exactly. Right. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I have a question for Aaron. Any thoughts on how to get knowledge out to the student body so that the interest level is where yours is?
Well, I think part of why our interest level is so high is because of, just like, we've been pretty involved with the development of the building, just like understanding it and like learning about it. So because we already engaged in a STEM activity, and we were informed of this opportunity a little early, and because we like really understand how valuable this could be, we, we operate in a, like, our robotics organization, you can see the differences, and you can see the opportunities the kids have because of how big the buildings are. And like, we understand how important having a good space to work out of is. We work out of Grace Best right now, which is by all means, a good, good place. We're very thankful for it. But this is an awesome one. But I think the best thing to do is just find the kids who are involved in CTE programs and show them just how incredible it is. I think right now, people hear Innovation Center, they don't know what that means. Like, this, that video, great opportunity. To people seeing just how awesome that building is, that's going to be the first step. Like, I would say going into classes, if you can, showing the video, saying, this is what's offered here. This is the, these are the opportunities you'll get post-secondary. A big draw to robotics, frankly, is because you can get into a good college from it. Absolutely. If kids understand that there are a lot of, not just college, but any industry opportunities directly from that building, understanding that, interest will go way higher.
And so in addition to going to the CTE classrooms and showing the video, we've also had a presence at eighth grade night, because we know we need to build a pipeline. And then also, we have a, you know, a career event coming up. We have ICAP lessons where we're talking about this in study halls as well. So we'll continue the conversation. But I, I agree with you, Aaron. Seeing is believing. So starting to actually see video can really sound, you know, hit somebody differently than just talking about it. Yeah?
Go for it, sure.
Ron?
Go ahead, Mr. Norris.
So when you presented at the Gelt, there was some interest from some MA folks. Trying to think of the right question. Can we partner with MA? I know there's block scheduling challenges. There's pipeline challenges. Can we partner with them to see how we can overcome those roadblocks? And, and on the greater picture, have we done the same with Douglas County and D20 for, for students, to Aaron's point, that may want to come?
Yeah.
But I think, I think maybe Brett may have some input there. Not now, but I'd just put him on the spot to, to help out with some of those financial challenges.
Right. Yeah. Well, what I would say is, I mean, eventually, we do want this to be an accessible facility for, for all learners of the area. Of course, it's a D38 program, and so we want to be really cognizant of that as well. But those discussions are all worthy conversations to be having, for sure. And identifying what the barriers might be and trying to find ways to mitigate through that.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
One or two last questions or comments before we move on?
Yeah. So first of all, great progress. Congratulations to you all. This is a, a big thing for our community. We, we really haven't done something on the facility side that's innovative in almost two decades. And several other, in fact, most other regions, at least in the state, have something like this. Right? So to Aaron's point, we've rendered ourselves less, one degree less competitive in this area. And so we're, we're fixing that and trying to leapfrog to, to redistinguish ourselves. Congratulations to you and your team. It's really important work.
Thank you.
The world around us is changing, right? We can't learn in the same ways. And we're a globally competitive environment. This is the kind of stuff we need to be doing to make sure our kids have the same chance that we did.
Yep.
Super important stuff.
I agree. To your point, Ron, we call it our Innovation Center, but at the same time, other districts that are, that we compete with, this is already, they're, they're a couple of years ahead of us. So the fact that we are, are doing what we need to do to make sure that our students are competitive during high school and post-secondary, whether your path is college or career, that's why we do what we do, is for our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okey dokey. Now, Mr. Ridgway and Melissa Andrews to consider and approve the sale of a land parcel located within the administrative complex boundaries. And Mr. Ridgway, we've had multiple conversations throughout the school year on this. And I will let you do a little bit of presentation before we see if there's a motion.
Very good. Thank you, Brett Ridgway, Chief Business Officer. When I first came to the district two and a half years ago, this was one of the talking points that, that I gathered was of interest with, with the board, with the, with the leadership, with the community in terms of what, what do we do? What are we doing with this central complex that we have here? And so from the, from the attachment in here into the, to the item in, in board docs, I, I'm bringing up this one particular slide because this boundary in red represents the, the, the single parcel that we have here as part of the central complex. And so we're sitting up here at the top here in, in big red, and it goes all the way down to, to the opposite corner where the baseball fields are at and the transportation center is at, et cetera. And so one of the first things that I, you know, observation is that, well, we, if we're going to do different things or anything in particular with this central complex, we would need to work towards being able to subdivide into various pieces. And so Melissa Andrews, when she came onboard here last spring, she worked with, with us to work with some surveyors to actually start drawing some, some potential lines of if we wanted to subdivide and do different things with, with certain pieces of this land, how we could do that. And that's kind of what brought to our, our first kind of tangible conversation last June, where we had quite a bit of conversation about the idea to, to subdivide this, this parcel and, and do different things with various pieces of that. Somewhere along the way, we got into the conversation with, with Trilax Cares and, and recognized that they had, had some need and some interest in, in looking at a different parcel of land from where they currently occupy, and that this, this parcel that we're highlighting here in blue would be something that would be of great interest to them. And so the request from the board back in June was, was to pursue further conversations with them to get to a point where there was some, some demonstrated interest from them towards, towards this end. And so, so we did that throughout the course of late in the summer on into the fall and such. And what we have here then is, is not only a formal letter of interest from them, and, and I'd like for them to be able to come up and, and speak some words to, to their interest in this as well. We did also then ask our surveyors to, to do a, a kind of a focused drawing for, for the proposal here. And so if I can just zoom in on that part real quick, we're talking about this, this portion that fronts Beacon Light Road, right next to the senior center there, measuring in at 2.8337 acres. So we got pretty, we got pretty specific about that. The, the documentation that, that Trilax Cares has submitted to us also includes kind of a, a simple rendering of how they would intend to, to potentially use this, this land. And so, so again, this, this is the background that we're reconnecting based on, on your requests and suggestions back in June, through the progress we've made throughout the course of the fall, that results in this, in this formal then, letter of interest from, from them through their, their brokerage partner at All of Real Estate. So that's kind of where I'd like to start with the conversation, with your, with your permission, or if you would, you would enjoy having, having the Trilax representatives come up and, and make a quick statement as well?
We invite you up to, if you'd like to? Mr. Schuer? Don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, thank you. And, and we appreciate not only the board's dedication to this process, but your amazing team here that's been super helpful. Those of you that are familiar with our facility know that with 8,000 square feet, we have staff in closets and food stacked in hallways, and we're just simply out of space. So we began this process a couple of years ago, looking to what we need to do. And through our data analysis and through research, we know we need at least two acres. Three would be ideal. And this coming in at 2.8 is like perfect sweet spot. We also had geographic limitation so we could service our client base. Many of our clients do not have transportation, and we want to be within walking distance. Moving from where we are now to this location doesn't change that, that variable at all. Part of the conversations we've had with staff is how do we partner with the school district to make sure that this is truly going to be a community resource? And that's part of our planning. How do we provide space to other organizations that can help provide services to our community? We have no desire to be the end-all, be-all for the residents here in Trilax, but we want to be the first place they call when they need help. And to do that, we partner with other organizations. We have now what we call Flex Space, which is what, a whopping two offices, where other organizations can come in and, and share their time with our neighbors and, and provide services. So we're prepared to make a much larger building than what we have, with the intent to provide shared space with other organizations, including the school district, when we can find ways to partner. And over the past couple of months, when it came to light that Silver Key may be in a position where they're going to need space, we kind of slowed down our plan to make the offer to the district on the property, to make sure we had a discussion with Jason and his team to see, is there a way to make this work for both organizations? And at a high level, we're in agreement, I think, Jason, across the board. And at a high level, we're in agreement, I think, Jason, across the board, that the services they offer and the services we offer are not only compatible, I think exponentially going to provide much better service to the community. And based on their needs for space and our initial drawings with the architect, we'll have the room with that current lot, with our current plans, to make it happen for both organizations. That's not to say we don't have a lot to work out yet. We have tons of details to discuss, but it's feasible and it's desirable, and we're of the same mindset that if we can combine Silver Key's operation with our operation under one roof, it's financially viable, it's logistically viable, it serves the needs of the community that we had all expressed as our desire, and I think it's just a great, really a great spot for the entire community to benefit from. So we are most definitely interested in pursuing this land. We have a formal offer. I'd also like a shout out to our broker at Olive Real Estate, who has waived his entire commission on this project as a donation to the community. This is a win for everybody involved. Do we have details to work out yet? Lots. But we're all willing, we're of the same mindset, and I think it accomplishes what you had expressed to us in terms of being a resource to the community. It works for us in terms of a resource for our client base, and I think it could work out very well, not only for Silver Key, but for other community support organizations that we can bring in. So any questions for me or for Haley?
Team? No?
Again, thank you for the opportunity, and again, these two are amazing. I so appreciate being able to work with them. Thank you.
Thank you. And what I'm excited about this, if this goes forward, is partnerships in our community that serve our community, from our nonprofits, especially from Silver Key, from TriLakes Cares, Town of Monument, D 38, and all of our residents of D 38, and how can we make sure that we are elevating and serving? And that's what, this is truly a service-minded mindset. That didn't sound, you know, you know what I'm saying. So thank you so much for sharing.
Thank you. And so technically, what we have here, again, is a letter of interest, a letter of intent from them. And the reason we can't really just go straight to a contract is because, well, we don't have the parcel defined yet. So this kind of lays out some steps that we need to do for what is called a feasibility period. So for the next 90 days, there would be some work done that would kind of, that we would be working together with TriLakes Cares. Sometimes we would be taking the lead, sometimes they'd be taking the lead, depending on what the situation is. But to pursue with the town, with the county, these next steps, that would formalize the definition of the property, and then we would be able to bring back to you that real contract of her acquisition when we get through these items of feasibility. And Melissa is here. Melissa's here, and she does all the good, hard work for it. So if you have any technical questions or anything you'd like to ask her?
Any questions?
Is the plan at this point just to divide out the one parcel that we're talking about, or still to do all the original subdivision that was discussed in the past?
I think at this point, my intention, our intention would be to just for the one parcel. But that substitute, your direction to us.
When I was looking at the past of, since I've been on this board, we've had four, since 2017, we've done four different transactions, and each time it has followed this same cadence. Because I wanted to make sure, are we being as transparent as we possibly can? And are we following with precedence and cadence? And sometimes transparency can be a little messy, because that is the true definition of transparency, is when you're decision-making and you're deliberating. So that's where we are, and this is where we are in the process of that. Okay.
Ms. Upchurch, I'd like to make a motion to direct Lewis Palmer School District 38 staff accept the letter of intent to purchase land offered dated January 17, 2025, from TriLakes Cares, to proceed with actions set forth therein, and when said conditions are met, to bring a final purchase contract forward for action consideration at a future meeting of the Lewis Palmer School District 38 Board of Education.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Norris has made a motion. Mr. Schwartz has seconded. Is there any discussion or comments? Nope, okay. Then we will vote. I did have one. Oh, back to Jason, I wanted to share also, thank you for that offer to, that you're still interested in this pursuit as well. And so making sure that all of our entities are pursuing together, I think, is important, and we did hear you. So with that, Ms. Wood?
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Upchurch?
Aye. Okay, so we will-
Thank you, we'll get to work.
Get to work.
On the next steps.
Thank you. Okay. Number D 2, consider approve I policy revisions. This is our second reading. Ms. Wettstein? You have been working on our I policies.
Good evening. We thoroughly reviewed all of the I policies over the course of the last couple of months, and we found that the majority of our policies were up to date and in alignment with CASB recommendations. There were a few minor revisions proposed that we talked about at our last meeting, none that have significant impact on our district operations. I was not planning a presentation again this evening, but I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, team? Seeing none?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To approve revisions to I policies as presented and recommended by district administration.
Is there a second?
Second.
There has been a motion to approve revisions to I policies as presented and recommended by district administration by Mr. Norris and seconded by Dr. Schenk. Any discussion or comments? Nope? Yeah, and I, when I looked all through these with the red lines, some of them are as simple as cross-references to other policies that just give them more teeth. Some of them are improving policies to make sure that we are leaning into taking care of our students and our staff, so thank you. And we also revisited, we visited a lot of I policies back in the summer as well.
We have reviewed several over the last couple of years.
Okay. If they're seeing no discussion, comments, questions, then Ms. Wood?
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Norris?
Aye.
Ms. Schwartz?
Aye.
Dr. Schenk?
Aye.
Ms. Upchurch?
Aye. Moving on to D 3, consider approve I policy repeals. Yep? And this is to repeal a policy I J O C and to repeal a policy I K F A. Any questions, or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to repeal policy I J O C, school volunteers, and policy I K F A, early graduation, as recommended by the district administration.
Second.
It has been motioned to repeal policy I J O C, school volunteers, and policy I K F A, early graduation, as recommended by district administration. That motion was made by Mr. Norris and seconded by Mr. Schwartz. Any comments, discussion?
Straight forward.
Ms. Upchurch, if I may, just clarify that these processes are included in our student handbooks and school documents, and they are not required policies.
Thank you for that clarification. Seeing none, Ms. Wood?
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Ms. Schwartz?
Aye.
Dr. Schenk?
Aye.
Ms. Upchurch?
Aye. Dr. Schenk, it looked like you were going to make a motion. You've got to be faster than that.
I had to find it, and I couldn't.
D 5, consider approve action regarding the future, that's, wait, do we have one more? D 4, right? Yep. D 4, consider approve adoption of new policy I H B D. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the adoption of new policy I H B D, equivalence of services, as recommended by district administrators and as required by federal law.
Second.
Any discussion? And I forgot, yes. So Dr. Schenk made the motion to approve the adoption of new policy I H B D, equivalence of services, as recommended by district administrators and as required by federal law, and it was seconded by Mr. Norris? Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Wood?
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Ms. Schwartz?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Upchurch?
Aye. Thank you so much, Ms. Wettstein. Okay, moving on to our next action item. D 5, consider approve action regarding the future of Grace Best Education Center. Okay. Mr. Ridgeway and Ms. Andrews?
Thank you, Brett Ridgeway, Chief Business Officer, and we had a good community engage and elevate meeting last week, and I want to thank everyone that came, and especially those of you, board members, really appreciated your attendance and participation in that. So we have, we have this, much the same presentation that we had, that we delivered then, and we've delivered at other board meetings here to go through. And, but we have, we have added a couple of things. Okay. And so I just want to, I want to hand this back to Melissa here, so we can talk about some of the technical things and of the options that we have here. But one of the things that we wanted to provide some clarity on, that we took away from last Thursday's meeting, was some additional statements, some intentions on what the homeschool enrichment academy and the transitions program, what that does mean to us, and ensure that we have strong intentions for what we want to do and how we want to move forward with those two programs. I had a good conversation with Mrs. Janomski today about homeschool, and talked to her about some of the successes that Melissa and I have had in the past about working and identifying space and constructing space, a very efficient and effective and cost-effective strategy. But this overall goal and intent, I think, is important, that we want to emphasize that these programs are important to us, and that's one of the reasons, I believe, why you want to consider action on here, is because the current space is not a long-term solution. So what is a good long-term solution? And knowing that there is some time impetus, as we talked about last week, and we can restate that here again as well, in terms of the fire marshal and such, that means that there are, that will be needs for temporary space in the 25, 26 year, and that's going to be quickly on our radar. And again, this is a sequence of decisions that we need to take, and so whatever your decision is tonight, we will be able to move forward and with these strategies, creates and communications, and some involvement, continued involvement in a process as we go throughout the course of the spring here. A second slide there has, again, some more details that Melissa's put together for us about the specific things that we need to do, that we want to do, and also focusing then on what would be a need for temporary space and what would be a need for permanent space. So those are just a couple of things that I wanted to draw some attention to, and we can get into, again, the specific options, but I wanted to put that out there, get your observation and reaction to this, this kind of new add to the conversation.
I'm definitely glad to see you've added some of the detail. I appreciate the committee members that came out to represent both of these programs, and I think it did kind of highlight that we could do a better job of emphasizing that we are here to make those programs better and stronger. There's definitely no intention of them going anywhere. When we talk about some of the temporary options, I know there was concern about the type of space that they would have. Would they have any compromise or anything that they would be losing during that interim period, in your opinion?
I have no doubt there would be something that would be different, certainly something that would be different from the long-term scenario.
Different, but loss of gym space or things like, important things that they'd have to do without?
Gym space would be one of the harder things to try and acquire, and so that would be the one in particular that I had a hard time making any early commitments to, but I also want, know that that's a priority, and so we would be open to that and looking for those opportunities. But if those opportunities don't provide, we would bring those to that community, to you all, and say, well, here's the constraint that we faced for that. Unless anything different you'd say in that regard?
So I have a question along your same lines. Back in 2020, when ANZER, we were working with ANZER Advisory Group, and when KP went through the building, as did Hollis and Miller, and I understand that those same groups went through in the fall as well. And what Transitions noted what was important to them, like sufficient space for instruction of an average of 15 students in a classroom setting, full kitchen for cooking and dining, space for physical, occupational, and speech therapy sessions, recreation area for structured and coordinated physical activities, wheelchair-accessible, ADA compliant. And then homeschool had identified drama, music, physical education, and art. And I really gleaned a lot from that meeting we just had on Thursday on the 16th. Your voices, by the way, I see several faces here tonight as well. That feedback was very well shared and heard, and so making sure that we are, to your point, Mr. Ridgeway, that when we're moving forward, that our goal, for me as one board member, and I'm going to confidently say it's the same for all of us as a board, that taking care of our students and our programming that is currently in Grace Best is at the forefront of making sure that we are leaning into what does home and what does space look like for our programming, from homeschool to transition, even Monumental Impact and Silver Key, certainly. So that was, has always worn hard on my heart of how do we move forward with this, when we identified where we were with Grace Best back in 2020? And then we set this goal for, to address this, and we've been kicking this can down the road. So we've got some options. We have five options. We could continue to kick the can, but as I understand it, here's my question, sorry, I ramble, but regardless of what we decide, if I understand correctly, no matter what decision we make, the gym is no longer, it's reached its end of life, even though it has a new floor, it has a fairly recent floor? Is that what I understand?
That is correct, and that was based on the assessment when Nun Construction and Hollis and Miller toured this last time and understood that the structure had been modified with supports to take on a roof that was heavier than what the structure could handle, which is now compromising that structure as a whole. And so the floor is in much better shape, but the structure itself is not, and it has been recommended, no matter which option we go with, that that comes down.
Okay. And so what I also have heard throughout all of this deliberation, and correct me if I'm wrong, regardless of what we decide to do, the structure that it's, as it sits right now, can no longer be occupied by the occupancy going forward for next year and beyond.
So the fire chief asked us to have a plan in place, and so I asked him, how long does that mean we can keep the kids in? And he said that would be a future discussion, but it sounded like he was pretty serious that we needed to make some long-term decisions for the students.
Really? How do you feel about it?
And so we do need to have a plan in place to take back to him, and since he was at the last meeting, he knows we're about halfway through that year, so we've got about six months to figure this out.
Sir?
I'm disappointed that we've allowed the can to be kicked this far. For us, in this era, to have to wait for the fire chief to tell us to do something is not good. The business decision's very easy. What's important about this slide, and for the stakeholders in those two programs that we're talking about, is that this board will be in place for another 10 months, barring any unforeseen incidents with us as individuals. And we're all committed to making sure that wherever those two entities go, it's better than where they are today in terms of capacity and capabilities. Do we all concur with that?
Yes, that the space that those students are in now is inadequate- Yes, that the space that those students are in now is inadequate and not
Unsafe.
Unsafe, inadequate, and not acceptable. And so, I think what I've heard from all of us is we are committed to a better space for those two programs because they are needed.
Right, and not too much tongue-in-cheek. The term that I like to use is, this facility would never pass the grandparent test, which means, which student would want to take their grandparents in to show them where they go to school? And we're far better than that, and these kids deserve that.
So, we need to make a decision that allows us to do a better job than we're doing right now. That current space is not adequate.
Well, I want to bring up and share with this dialogue is, another school district in our Pikes Peak region made the news because they waited too long, and now they're in an emergency situation. So, we do have in front of us right now, time to make sure that we're taking care of our kids and our staff and our community before we get to that place. And that's why I personally would not like to kick the can down the road anymore, even though it is an option. We could do nothing, but if we do nothing, those individuals still have to not be in that building anymore. So, then we're just throwing taxpayer dollars away. And everything else on this list requires us to go to taxpayers, and those dollar amounts, when I look on it, it says right on it, those dollar amounts do not include the costs of refurbishing, of space, of furniture, of a new kitchen. And so, what has helped me to come to my conclusion, and we haven't made a motion, I don't know what my board, where my board stands on this, but what helped me honestly was that gym was very much something I was holding on to. But I've also, if any of us who've been and walked through the transition classroom space, those kiddos are losing their space. It's shrinking because of the, what has caused the building at the end of life with its systems, and where that end of life and the systems, and they've lost that entire library space, and that was an essential piece for them. So, that doesn't feel good that that's where those kiddos are being educated right now. And so, I want to make a commitment to our students to do something better for them, for our homeschool kids, for our transitions kids, for our Silver Key families and members, and for our robotics team.
Are we ready for a motion?
If you're ready for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to direct the Lewis Palmer School District 38 Administration to make arrangements for the demolition of Grace Best Education Center located at 66 North Jefferson Street, including informing the Board of Education and Tri-Lakes Community of the timeline to accomplish this directive, as well as the necessary plans for housing the homeschool education academy and the transitions program in the 2025-26 school year and beyond.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I think this is one of those tougher decisions where we know that no matter what we choose, we're not going to make everybody in the community happy. So, we just have to do what we believe, based on the excellent work from Mr. Ridgeway and Ms. Andrews, is the most financially feasible thing to do. And right now, we're obviously not in a position where we can go ask for $20 million. And in fact, I think we could actually spend some time talking about the fact that this isn't an apples-to-apples comparison, because the cost of fixing the building, when compared to a new school cost, we're including all new fixtures and all new equipment, things like that. So, it would actually get closer, but at this point, as Ron often brings up, there is definitely a cost of doing nothing. And the last thing we need is to end up in a position where that building causes more health issues, or gets us in an emergency situation, as the systems do continue to fail. And we don't want to be in a position where we have to dump millions of dollars on it unexpectedly. So, I just, I don't think we have a better option.
Maybe if I can add to that real quick. I don't think these are options for refurbishing and fixing a school versus a flex space.
I understand. I'm talking about the different options represented, the six options.
Anybody else? This is a heavy topic. I agree with you.
Heavy.
But there is a cost of kicking the can down the road, and that building, the Band-Aids, I do commend the staff for putting the Band-Aids where they have, when they can, but I think we are where we are, and I don't want to be in a situation like D11. I want to ask a question of you guys. I know that we're in discussion mode, but it just popped into my head. On the timeline, I think that's extremely important of what are we looking at on, I would like to request as one board member, that next steps include, what does demolition timeline look like, and what does timeline look like for all of our occupants in that building, and that we really are leaning into being swift, because we are in open enrollment season right now, and that we're swift with doing what we can, the two meetings we had with homeschool enrichment academy, and the meeting we had with transition, and then when we look at the priorities from four years ago, I guess now it's five years ago, that we really are doing the best we can and serving the best that we can with their needs. And I have confidence that you guys can do that.
And I think it goes without saying, that things won't proceed until we've all agreed that we have adequate space for these programs, and if we need to adjust timelines to make sure that happens, we can. Correct?
Well put.
Yes.
Very high priority that the next thing, that should we vote yes on this, that the next, the next decision is an adequate interim solution.
Ideally better than adequate.
And that's why, yeah, I think if there's any clarity, any particular clarity, is that for each of these five options, that is a necessary next step. But this first decision tells us more on how to pursue that, and gives us greater opportunity to say, yes, we are doing this definitively, rather than going to potential locations and saying, hey, we're just exploring this. This is no longer be an exploration, this is a pursuit that we will be able to do.
We generate a compelling event.
Correct.
The only other discussion item I'd want to bring up is, we have a lot of things going on right now with the CTE center, and with the potential costs here, and finding new temporary space. And I don't think we know exactly how much the CTE center is going to cost us just yet, because we don't know what kind of sponsorship we're going to get. Are we safe in allocating these funds for this?
I would say that we know how much we are going to invest in the CTE center, and that will be to basically outfit the facility and to make it operational. The depth or, the depth of the operation is what will be impacted by the partnerships.
And I should declare, I don't want to make it sound like we don't have a plan.
Right.
Obviously, the more contributions we can get from sponsors, the better.
Right, and that will just, that will enhance what we'll be able to operate, open with. The way that I wanted to structure this, and the way that I believe that I have structured this, is to give us as much opportunity as we can to leverage the opportunity that Senate Bill 2417 did for us last year, and to be able to do that and these things with that single opportunity. So, we're trying to maximize that, and I believe that we have, and I'll show you actually, when we get into our next topic in the amended budget, where I'll be showing where I'm now going to be demonstrating the project costs and everything that we're going to be doing internally for the Community Education Center, and then that can start to show, well, there are additional opportunities beyond that.
I don't know if this
Resources, I should say, sorry.
And further discussion with the board, I don't know if this would belong in the next item or here, but when we agreed to sell the land where Monument Academy East sits, the board in 2018 made a resolution that said the dollars that were gained from that land sale would be used for specifically facilities for our students. And so, this would be a perfect example of where those dollars could be used for this.
Right, and there are other funds in that as well.
Mm-hmm. Correct. Is there any other discussion? Okay, well, seeing none. Ms. Wood.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Dr. Schenk.
Aye.
Ms. Upchurch.
Aye. Got some work to do. I mean, you already are working on the work. I don't want to minimize that. You have already been very engaged in this work, but
Correct. But this does give us clarity on your direction, and so I want to thank you for that, and we will be able to then now charge ahead with that clarity.
Well, we're excited to have you go forward and make it better for our kids. Thank you.
Better, better for our kids.
Better. Thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Ridgeway, you get to stay up here for our next agenda item, which is D six, F and P and A, to consider and approve the 2024-2025 amended budget.
So, the normal financial planning and analysis agenda item with this additional task, if you will, of approving amended budget. State statute allows us to amend a current year budget anytime up and through January 31st of that fiscal year. And so, it's always a good idea to do that, and to tighten up the budget as we get into that midpoint of the year, once we know exactly how the student count turned out, how our per people revenue is going to perform for this year, et cetera. So, I'll take you through just a couple of things before we get specifically to the amended budget that really are germane to what we've just been talking about. And here in this, in this normal financial reporting package, I have for the last, I don't know how long, probably almost all the whole two years that I've been here, two and a half years I've been here, had a lot of focus on this net cash position, and how, again, Senate Bill 2417 was creating this opportunity for us. I've had this, sorry, there we go. And so, for the last couple, few months, I've had these, this is a really busy chart, I know, and I've had these different lines on here to demonstrate what our prior cash flow pattern was, which is this dotted line here, which has a much deeper V to it, and what the revised cash flow from Senate Bill 2417, which re-timed the state share payments afforded us, which is a much shallower V, which if we started at the same point up here that we had been traditionally with almost $16 million with the next net cash position, now was going to be able to create this opportunity of one-time spend for this. What I'm showing in this version of the chart is kind of how we will transition through the course of the remainder of this year into starting to go from this top red line to the dotted red line here, right? And so, we've been going along, kind of quote-unquote as normal through the first half of this year, now that we've closed the transaction, and now we're moving into the actual project phase for the Innovation Center and for these other priorities, we will start taking this fund balance opportunity and moving it to Fund 44, where we will do this work and convert us to this new cash flow pattern. Does that make sense? Okay. So, the next thing I wanted to demonstrate for you or show you was really the last few pages of this report have always been focused on our operations projects, and and these pages have been here for a while. This is, what this is typically focused on is what we do in Fund 43 as part of our annual capital program. And so, we look, and this is the list of projects that we considered last spring for the capital program for this 24-25 year, so continuing our audio enhancement, et cetera. So, all these projects that we approved then, and this has been a tracking sheet to say, what was our original budget? How's that budget been adjusted? What's been our year-to-date spend? What's left to do into that as well? And so, these last few pages of this report start with those original projects. It goes into what I described as the subsequently identified and necessarily pursued projects. One of those you might remember was the window film that we talked about over the summer, that we wanted to go ahead and expand that and finish that off through the buildings, and so you can see something like that here. There's things like when we had a vehicle go down, we actually had a car get in an accident, so we had to make sure that we made that hole and were able to pursue that. There were a few projects that we carried over from the prior year, and so we can see how that works as well. This page here, the next to last page, used to be the last page, was what we do in Fund 15. And so, I've spoken at various points about the different fund numbers that we use, and the reason that we do that for our capital program here. One of the things that's important that happened in Fund 15 is the financings. And so, we have an energy improvement lease that we entered into, and that's one of the main things that we started in that Fund 15, the BUDS purchase lease that we've had, which I believe is actually, this is the last year for that. And then what you'll see is this career and innovation center lease. So, this is a new add for you to this, and this starts again because we just closed the transaction here in January, and we'll start making these payments here in January as well. And so, we have that in here now as this line item, project line item for acquiring the space, and that is part of the amended budget that we'll be considering today. And then there's another page added to the end here, which is the Fund 44 capacity projects, and this is specifically regarding then the Career and Innovation Center. And so, this is here, the amended budget, is a total of $6.7 million. This is the fund contribution that we will be doing as a district operation for the Career and Innovation Center. This will be what non-construction, non-construction is going to be doing for us here over the course of the spring in terms of renovating the building for the purposes that we have asked you to accomplish that fly-through that you saw here earlier. What I want to draw attention to is that this is, again, $6.7 million, and what we've talked about in the past is that opportunity from Senate Bill 2417 was going to be an eight to an eight-and-a-half million dollar opportunity, and that was going to add to the $2 million of fund balance that we had accumulated in the fee in lieu of land Fund 44 program that we were just alluding to. And so, that is a $10.5 million total, of which then we're going to be using $6.7 million of this. And so, circling all the way back to the question that was made earlier in terms of what resources do we have, this is how I'm trying to create this overall picture, that we can take this one opportunity from this legislation that we did last year, combined with financing our acquisition, and then having a very intentional budget for this renovation, to still leave us some resources that we'll be able to pursue all these additional steps with, including the demolition, including finding permanent space for HSEA and transition programs. So, that information is there, and it's now going to be able to be presented in the monthly financials as we continue to go forward here in the spring. Yes, sir?
So, just as a friendly reminder, this is all the agility that we have been speaking about the last several months when Mr. Ridgeway's been presenting this. Because of the way he's organized the funds that are now available that we've always had, but that we couldn't utilize for our kids, which is completely wrong and backwards, because that's what the money's for in the first place. The way he's done it is given us the agility to handle multiple priorities at the same time. So, it's a wonderful job of the art of the and versus the or, Mr. Ridgeway. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. So, that's what I wanted to highlight on that financial, the normal, kind of the normal financial reporting package, and those are the things that you see, and that you will see, you see now, and then you'll see going forward related to these projects. What I have then in terms of saying, well, this is all about the amended budget then for this meeting request to consider approving an amended budget. And so, I have just a few slides that I've put into here, a lot of it we won't necessarily refer to here, it's just kind of memorializing this for the record, if you will. And so, it starts with the appropriate resolution, which I'm actually And so it starts with the appropriation resolution, which I'm actually going to come back to the appropriation resolution, because it goes through all the funds, and includes Monument Academy. And I want to start with this slide, which we've talked a little bit about, but again, just want to reiterate how this is kind of the fundamental piece of our budgeting, whether we're doing it in the original budget or in the amended budget. And that is, what is the School Finance Act revenue going to be? It is kind of just a fortuitous statistical anomaly this year that the original budget hit so close to what our final calculation would be for the School Finance Act. Excuse me. And the reason I just want to highlight that is that what that means is that there's not really a lot of additional change necessary, especially in the general fund budget. And so what you'll see when I go back to the appropriation resolution is just very nominal changes. And if I go through the individual funds here, you would see, you would just see some very nominal changes, especially in the expense load for the general fund. And that's what appropriation is, is focusing on what are we going to spend. So, you see it only being $77,000 different in total for the general fund between what we passed back in June as the original adopted budget in this column and what we'd be proposing for the amended budget here in this column. What you also though see is this effect in revenue, because when we move money from general fund into the Fund 44 to accomplish this project, the way that we actually mechanically do this is through a revenue transfer, a revenue allocation. And so that's why you see all of a sudden a drop in revenue. It's not a drop in revenue total in the district. It's a drop in revenue out of the general fund. And it will go down into Fund 44. Oh, sorry, I went past it. I went too fast. So, here is $7 million here. That was coming from $7 million.
Wait, slow down.
Here.
Where's, okay, got it.
Okay. And then what you see when that $7 million comes out of the general fund, it does affect, all on the right side affects the walk forward of fund balance. So, if we started the year, and fund balance is, again, is a slightly different measurement from the net cash position that I present in that other graph. So, the fund balance and the original adopted budget, which I do with most originally adopted budgets, I show a balanced income statement, so total revenue equally total expense. But when we get to the amended budget, we have clarity on where we're going to manage fund balance to at the end of the year. And again, it's this change in fund balance of $7.5 million going down from the beginning of year fund balance to what we've now projected to be the end-of-year fund balance for the general fund. And if you're noticing that the $7.5 million revenue reduction here doesn't quite equal the $7.2 million of revenue increase in Fund 44, that's because some of it does go into Fund 15. And so our revenue change there is about $500,000. So, that's the three pieces coming together. So, I'll go back right now then to the appropriation resolution and just use that as a way to demonstrate then all of the changes that we are still making, even though this is a very small amount of change for this version of this final amended budget versus the original adopted budget. What the resolution does here, again, is focus on the expense, the projected expense load, because that's what appropriation is. How are we going to spend the money? And so what we have here is listed by the individual fund number, what the originally adopted appropriation is, and then what I'm suggesting to be the amended budget appropriation. So, again, here's that small $77,000 adjustment for the general fund, Fund Number 10, going from $54.83 million to $54.91 million. Now, in the original budget, we did already, I did kind of forecast or, you know, give indication that there would be a lot of activity happening in Fund 44 this year. And so we had put a big number in there as a placeholder. At $10.6 million, I'm actually, so that's actually coming down from that originally adopted budget, because that was just a big number placeholder originally, and now that we have some more precision to that. So, we're actually projecting a $9.39 million spend out of Fund 44, which includes this investment in the Innovation Center and includes, you know, some of this Grace West work and stuff. And it will continue to include more as we go forward and into the next fiscal year. Does that make sense? Have I lost anyone on that? Questions on that so far? So, the next thing, the next thing I want to highlight in this page is a lot of, kind of beneath the surface work that's been happening over the course of the last year-plus to change how we do student activity fee accounting. And to transition that way from what was a, or what has been a currently a single fund, a Fund 23, and how we're breaking that into two separate funds, one that focuses on actual student activity fees, so that when we approve a fee schedule every spring about what are going to be the participation fees for a sport, for a class, et cetera, it will, it is going to be in the future housed separately and specifically in Fund 78. I call it 23-78 versus what we do for fundraising and clubs and things that are more of a multi-year pursuit, which will be housed in Fund 79 or 23-79. And so from the original adopted appropriation, when we were still living in this fund, single fund of Fund 23 world, I'm moving us out of that into these now two separate funds of student fees and student fundraising. And so that's what you see happening here in this middle section here, where I got bordered by the dotted lines, where we're really moving away from that one single appropriation into these two separate funds moving forward. And this, again, was a project that we started really in the fall of '23, I want to say, where we started by creating what we call the shadow fund. And it was designed to kind of mirror all the transactions that were happening in Fund 23 so that we could accumulate good transaction history and demonstrate to schools on how they were going to be able to see the information, how they're going to be able to access it going forward. And then, so that, looking forward to that, we would make this transition into the 24-25 year to make this change. So, it wasn't a sudden flip of the switch. It was quite a lengthy and drawn-out process. And really, to get us to this point where we can say now, now are we not only tracking that activity very specifically and intentionally, now we also be able to budget it specifically and intentionally moving forward? So, this is kind of, for an accounting nerdy person, this is a significant step. And so I just wanted to say this is how you're seeing, this is what you're seeing and what has been behind all of this and the reasons for that. And probably finally, the final thing I say is we have everything aggregated for Monument Academy into this one line. And it's important, of course, to know that as the authorizing board, you are still responsible for validating their own budget and their own appropriation. And so we have put that information in here as well. And I think further back in the package, you would see their specific appropriation resolution. But I want you to know and be sure that that information is included for you here as well. The additional pages of this document is a lot of good information, but I don't want to drag you through all of this right now. But there's a lot of historical context that is good to have at your fingertips if and when you want it and you want to have information available to you. There's also something called the Uniform Budget Summary here, which is something that we are required to do to accumulate data so that people from a state-level perspective can pull our budget information and compile it with other school districts' budget information. And so if it's just formatted into this singular format, then they are able to do that. So, again, I've just provided that here for memorialization purposes. So, we come back, really, this is the meat of it, is the appropriation resolution for the amended budget. So, any questions that you would have after that presentation?
Okay, got it. Okay. I, my, a couple of questions real quick when we're doing this amended budget. And I also looked through the audit report. Thank you for sharing that with us. I know it's not tied to this, but for the Hulting and Company auditors that...
Hulting, yes.
Yep. When we're looking at this and we're looking at, and I understand, I'm following, my ADHD brain is following. When we're looking at especially the capital expenses, there's, what I think of when I go into this vote is two things. A, I want to make sure that as many dollars as is possible are as close to the student as possible. At the same time, I also want to make sure that we are balancing that line where we are ensuring that the education space that our kids, all of our kids and all of our programs in the district, that their education space is safe and healthy. And I don't want to fall into a situation where we're putting Band-Aids on buildings. I want to make sure that our capital needs are being met and up to date as much as possible. That's what goes into my vote, for what it's worth. I probably should have saved that for discussion, but... Any thoughts before or recommendations, or I mean motions?
Just a quick question, and I'm just not sure if it's in this part, though, to be candid.
Okay.
Is there in here anything about revenues, for example, interest income and investment income on our reserves?
Yes. So, let me...
I'll bet you know exactly which page it's on.
I'll find a place for you to see that, actually. Let me go into this main package and it'll go into the, to this, the bookmarks here. And if I do General Fund Source Revenue page. And so what we have here is this, this is the line for interest income. So, for the 23-24 year, we received, and this is in the general fund, $384,000 worth of interest income. This year's amended budget that I'm proposing is $425,000. The year-to-date actual is $251,000.
Fiscal year-to-date.
Fiscal year-to-date.
Yep.
And so that is, you can't just do the times-two method on this one, meaning we're six months through the year and we want to multiply that times-two, because we do know that rates are starting to go down.
Right.
And...
So, our balances.
Right, right.
But the big, go ahead, please.
So, this, here is a place where you can see that, that, one place where you can see that in particular. Another place you can see that in particular is there's a page here called the Cash Position Summary. And so on this page, which I know is a lot of information on a single page, but this is designed to tell, to demonstrate to you where all of the money is, what bank accounts they are housed in, and if those accounts are earning interest, what the interest that's being earned on them in terms of the dollars and the actual rates that are being recognized from that. And so, you know, the good news is, yes, we are receiving an interest income from our reserves, where for a long time we hadn't been when rates were so low. And that's kind of the good news. Bad news of, you know, what we are hearing from the Federal Reserve is that there won't be as many cuts in the Fed Funds Rate here in the 24, or I'm sorry, in the 25 calendar year as they had predicted maybe six months ago. So, while that makes borrowing more expensive for those of us that may be wanting to buy a house or buy a car or whatever, that is, on the flip side, also going to keep giving us more interest income from this perspective. And so there are pluses and minuses.
The point I was going towards is, can you pull back up the difference of the last two full years, please?
Sure. It's on this line here.
Yeah, so, and I apologize, I don't know what page you're on.
35.
Page 35.
So, what's the difference between $300,000 and change and $400,000 change, right?
Yes. Last year's actual to this year's projection.
Right. And can you please read me those numbers? I just don't want to burn everybody's time, but...
$384,000, 346 was our last year's full year, and projecting for this year, $425,000.
Okay. So, about $40,000 on 380.
Yeah.
So, an incremental 10%.
10% higher.
Income growth. Right. And the reason I bring that up is very simple. There are lots of ways to look at numbers. But the most important thing is, are we maximizing anything that we can get our hands on to make sure we have more agility to do things that impact our students or our community? And the answer is yes. And we're, this team's far from perfect, but the work they're doing here is really, really good. And if you compare that to what corporations are doing with their cash, I think you'll see this is pretty good growth.
Actually appreciate that you brought that up. I was meant to ask about interest, but not in your way. But have we been, do we, do we continue to explore opportunities to increase that position? That interest position?
To increase our yields? Yeah. And so that cash management page is really, what I want to be able to reflect on that over the course of time is how we will be keeping cash in the places that yield, give us the highest yield for that. And that's why we started with the Calla Trust relationship, for instance. And so, you know, we don't want to hold a lot of money in a traditional DDA account, which is earning us zero interest. We want to hold it in our interest-bearing accounts and then transfer it out as we spend it right in a timely manner. And so we want to keep our average daily balances up, because that's where we're earning the interest income.
So, with the state saying next year that we are going to see minimal increases in our per people funding of right around 3-ish percent. And knowing that we've got capital needs, student needs, making sure we're taking care of our staff, certainly our staff, you know, I think about paras, for example, don't mean to open a can of worms, but... What is our position on how much we have in reserve?
Well, what we have done in the past and what we would want to continue to do in the future is not hold on to excess reserves. We have the reserves that are necessary to manage our cash flow. And everything else, we're making sure that we're investing in the programs that we are operating. So, we are, this year, of course, we're moving from a higher level of reserves that we've had to do in the past because of the way that we've had to manage our cash flow on our own, to a lower level of reserves that is going to reduce our interest income over time, because we will have less reserves on hand that will be earning interest, because we will have invested those in the facility and in these one-time needs. So, am I answering your question or...
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that our reserves were, A, healthy and not too much, not too little.
Exactly.
And was curious about the interest earned on the reserves.
Yeah, we want to make sure it fits within that range, because there, yeah, we don't want to sit on too much. We want to manage our cash flow and earn what we can when we can, but make sure that we are spending the money that we receive on the students in the year that we receive it for them.
That's why I was getting at, with the lower, with seeing lower dollars coming in, making sure that we're taking care of, taking care of our stakeholders, our students, staff, and being fiscally responsible. Anything else? All right. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Of course you will.
To approve the 2024-2025 fiscal year amended budget as presented.
Do we have a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Okay. So, Mr. Norris has made a motion to approve the 2024-2025 fiscal year amended budget as presented. Mr. Brown has seconded it. Is there any further discussion? All right. Seeing none. Ms. Wood?
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Dr. Shane?
Aye.
Ms. Upchurch?
Aye. Okay, sir, thank you. Okay. Moving to Item D seven, Approval of Consent Agenda.
I actually had a question about that, if it's not inappropriate. I was wondering if there was a way that we could take the resignation letter piece out of consent agenda and actually bring it up for discussion, just given the importance of what we're doing here to make sure that if there's anything the board wants to discuss or comment on, that we do that. Is there a way that we can?
Yeah, any board member can take anything off the consent agenda at any time to separate, and separate it out and discuss and/or vote separately. and separate it out and discuss and/or vote separately.
Okay.
So would you like to remove Item E4 out of consent for further discussion?
And into the board meeting agenda?
Into an action, okay, yep.
Today?
Yes, of course. Okay. So we are removing E4 out of consent. Is there any other items in consent that you'd like to discuss or remove out of consent? No, seeing none. We can do a motion on the consent, the rest of the consent agenda, which would be E1, E2, E3, and E5. There's a motion. And then we'll go into discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, E1, E2, E3, and E5 as presented.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Norris has made a motion to approve the consent agenda for Items E1, E2, E3, E5 as presented. It has been seconded by Dr. Schenk. Is there any discussion on those items or on that motion, I mean, not on the items, but on the motion? Nope. Ms. Wood, would you take call?
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Dr. Schenk?
Aye.
Aye. And now we will discuss E4. Mr. Schwartz, would you like to start?
Yeah, I, I'm looking at the letter of resignation here and as what board member I'm going to vote to accept it. It appears based on what was written that Dr. Dattery did the consummative professional thing and she found that there was an impasse and decided to put the students first and look for a, and ask for a mutual separation.
Any other discussion? I want to say on behalf of the board that we're, I'm personally grateful for Dr. Dattery's contributions over the past several months. And I honestly wish her the best in her future endeavors. And as we move forward, I'm confident that we do have good leadership in place here in D38. And we will, the next steps will, if, if we choose to accept her resignation letter, then we would, at our February 4th work session, talk about next steps and what that looks And, and I, in her resignation letter, she cited that some working relationships hadn't developed as she had hoped. And I actually want to extend our gratitude for her service.
And for, and in the interim, in the roughly two weeks between now and February 4th, I trust that the staff will act as if Superintendent were on vacation or out of town.
So the protocol is our Assistant Superintendent does step into that role as acting in the interim right now, yep.
Okay. So we can rest assured and the community rests assured that the, from a student and staff perspective, we won't miss a beat here.
Mm-hmm. And these are always tough. These are tough.
I guess I'd like to make a motion then.
Okay.
To accept Dr. Dattery's letter of recommendation.
Or resignation.
Her recommendation?
Letter of resignation, yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Norris to accept Dr. Dattery's letter of resignation. And it has been seconded by Mr. Brown. Any further discussion on the motion? No? Okay. Ms. Wood?
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Dr. Schenk?
Aye.
Ms. Upchurch?
Okay. Number F1, future meetings. We have that executive sess, or not executive session, that work session on the 4th. And we will have an AI update from Dr., or from, yeah, from, let's see, from Adam Frank and Amber Wetstein. We have a graduation task force. And we will also go into next steps for what the future looks like. And is there anything else? If there's anything else that you'd like to see on the agenda, please reach out. Is there anything else for the good of the order from my fellow board members or any statements before we adjourn? No, seeing none? Okay, then we are officially adjourned. I wanted to do that.